All right, I will go ahead and get started at seven oh seven. If you could all rise for the pleasure of ladies. All right, welcome, everybody. It's exciting to see a room full of people and smiling. Thank you all. Uh, one quick announcement just for the board. I know the agenda says, but there's a mistime to not have an executive session tonight. The mistime from the previous. That being said, Dr. Willett, uh, invention convention students.
So we have a really exciting evening tonight. There's a lot of acknowledgements and thank you all for coming. It's very exciting. Um, you were one of the best behaved classes I've ever heard because everyone was really quiet. But uh, so we're going to start with the students that have been part of the invention convention. I think Miss Estes is here. Access to those, would you like to introduce our convention convention geniuses?
Yes, so we have um, two guests this evening. We have Arnia and I'm just giving you first names, Arnia and Olivia. And they are actually two students who were selected at the state competition for invention convention last year to attend the US national competition, which is going to be held in Dearborn, Michigan with at the Henry Ford Museum in June. So they're here with us this evening to present their projects. Uh, but I just, just to reiterate, the invention convention uh, program is um, available to all the students in grade six. And it is supported through the science classes and Mrs. Lehman was actually the um, the girls teacher in sixth grade. So Mrs. Lehman got them, you know, very prepared and ready. And I've been working with them recently and uh, to further develop their ideas and projects. And I'm very proud for all the new things that they've learned, including 3D design and 3D printing. Um, to really um, add on to and do a little bit more of the prototyping for their inventions. But I'm not going to tell you more than what them telling you about their projects. So who's first? So they have to present to a group of judges at nationals. So we are very um, thankful that you were allowing them the opportunity to kind of do a drive around here with all of you today. Because when you talked about, how does it feel to be in a group of people and to be in front of, you know, um, a large group we don't know and what, what's it gonna, what's it gonna be like? So this is part of what they'll also add into their learning logs to reflect on the experience and what have they learned and what can they improve on when they go to nationals. So this is Olivia. Do you mind if she just has this table? So she can put down some of her things. Very good. Yeah, let's get out. We'll just brush off the trap meat in um, Manchester.
Hi, my name is Jason Tenshaw. I am in seventh grade and I go to TNS. My invention is called the using anti-anxiety dog, but it helps to relieve dogs from stress um, and anxiety. I first learned about this problem when I realized my own dog and many other dogs around the world struggle with anxiety. Um, when I was doing research for my invention, um, I found that about seventy-two point five percent of dogs have anxiety. About twenty-five percent of dogs have arthritis and about sixty-six percent of pets are dogs. My invention is better than other inventions that also help to solve, to solve the same problem. Because it uses um, sensory stimuli, natural sensory stimuli instead of using drugs or chemicals. My invention works, but as it uses a lavender scented pillow. Um, it has a flap to get into the Velcro on the bottom. I think the first um, layer of uh, fabric is a heating cooling non-toxic gel pack, which you can put into the microwave or the um, freezer to make colder hot. Um, I found that when given, when you put heat on dogs' joints, it can help them with arthritis. So my invention can also help dogs with arthritis. Um, underneath the first layer, so there's a beach ball which represents an air mattress to give extra support and comfort. Underneath the air uh, beach ball is a soothing sound machine, which actually goes through the bottom layer phone and onto the bottom where the buttons are which activates the um, soothing noise machine. So that when the dog goes to step on the bed and puts pressure onto the uh, buttons on the hard surface underneath the that it automatically plays the um, uh, soothing sound. Um, for my first prototype of my invention, I had a lavender scented pillow, a heating cooling gel pack and a noise machine. I did have this flap, but it was, there was nothing holding it up. So it was just kind of moving around and very unstable. So for my second prototype, I added Velcro onto the bottom of the bed. So this stays up. Um, for my third prototype, I thought it'd be a good idea if the, the dogs could have a chance to have more comfort and support. So I added a air mattress, which at the time was a ziplock bag. When I filled the ziplock bag with the pump, um, I found that only held air for about five seconds. So for my um, fifth prototype, I needed something, or for my first prototype, I needed something that um, holds air better. So I changed it to a beach ball, which is what is in my invention now. Um, for my fifth prototype, um, I don't have it right now, but I made a um, container that holds the essential oils in the pillows that if the dog were to eat the pillow, it wouldn't consume any of the um, essential oils and would not get sick. Um, if I want to revise my prototype further, I would want to make the material, like the fabric on my dog bed thicker or more stir um, durable. So I'd have fire hose, which I know um, a lot of dog toys are made out of to last longer. But I would need to test my fire hose. I would need to test if they can smell the fire hose, feel through the fire hose and um, hear through the fire hose, because those are some major parts of my invention. Um, that's it. Thank you.
So each honorary tonight is going to receive a special Tallinn Eagles water. Uh, which by the way is going to increase in value by at least three times once the tariffs get canceled.
Next joining us is our.
Hi, I'm Arnia Dungary and I'm a seventh grader at Tallinn Middle School. In my family, food isn't, cooking isn't just something that brings us food. It's a way to connect, make special memories and laugh. However, most of the food my family cooks tends to splatter, which causes burns. So I decided to research the problem of burning your hands when hot liquid splatter. During my research, I discovered that about four hundred and eighty thousand people go to the hospital each year for scald burn treatment. I also found out that about three hundred children go to the hospital every day, two of them dying. As I was learning this, I realized that this was the problem I needed to solve. I chose to make the splatter shield stirred because I wanted to make a solution that keeps the user safe while they cook without slowing them down. My invention does exactly that. A current solution for this problem on the market is a splatter guard, which is a lid with a flat screen. However, the splatter guard doesn't allow the user to do anything while the liquid splatters. Meanwhile, the splatter shield stir is in a dome shape and has an opening on the top. The user is able to cook and stir through the dome shape while staying safe from the splatter, unlike the splatter guard. My invention is simple and easy to use. All you have to do is put it like a lid on a pot and start cooking through the bowl. I used suggestions from my family, classmates and teachers in order to make my very first prototype for invention convention. From there, I wrapped the metal handles in silicone so that they wouldn't get too hot. And I substituted the duct tape I had used earlier to seal the metal shards in the hole with a thin metal strip. I tested this prototype by asking my mom to cook with it and seeing if any of the splatter got out and none did. For my new prototype for US nationals, I shrunk the height of the dome so that, and I got rid of this protruding metal rim so that the user is able to see their food clearly. And it's not, their view isn't hindered by anything. I also moved the handles up at a forty-five degree angle so that when you're cooking on a lower pot, the handles wouldn't be too close to the frame flames. I changed the opening shape from a circle to a clover, which allowed the user to rest their spoon in there without it twirling around and also allowed the user to reach the edges of the pot. This clover shape was also still big enough to add small food items in like meevles and kilis. I also made another version of the splatter shield stir with a different kind of handle, a singular handle that extends outwards like this. To make these 3D models that I've been showing you, I had to learn how to use a program called Tinker Cat. I also learned how a 3D printer works and how to use one. I met with multiple experts in different fields, like a burn specialist, to help me improve the design and material aspects of the splatter shield stir. I also created an in-depth survey on the design and functionality of the splatter shield stir using Microsoft Forms. Along with the survey, I created a flyer that I posted on multiple different platforms. Out of the twenty-seven participants in my survey, twenty-four said that, said that they would buy and use the splatter shield stir if it was on the market. And twenty-five said that they would recommend it to another person. Currently, I'm researching effective heat resistant materials that are better than metal and are easy to, easier to clean than silicone. Once I decide that, decide the materials I want to use, I will work with the machine shop at Yukon to manufacture my prototype, prototype for US nationals. I will also test the effectiveness of the new design. If that prototype is effective, then I hope to do a market value on it and hopefully patent it's mine. The splatter shield stir will help keep people safe in kitchens while they cook and it'll also help reduce the amount of people visiting the hospital for scald burn treatment every year. Finally, it will also help keep the environment safe as it's made from long lasting and durable materials. Thank you for listening to our.
Does the board have any questions for our?
I'm sold.
Okay, go ahead. I'll, I'll say this is, oh, first of all, holy cow. That was amazing. Uh, bravo to you both for, I mean, I looked at Ms. Basal over here after, after the first presentation and I'm saying the same thing after the second one. Wow. That, that, when I just heard you talk about market value and patenting it, threw me off. That was amazing. So um, I'll say this, somebody in the back of the room, I won't, I won't make a big fuss about it, who runs an awesome club called DECA. Uh, that would be Mrs. Bridge and uh, and uh, it, it, I mean, everything you've practiced in, I don't know how long, what's the timeline been on this? How long have you been working on these, on these projects? Two years.
Well, I started in the sixth grade in science.
All the way through now. Wow.
Then they did their school competition and from there, um, participants were selected to compete at the states and then at states, there were judges from all over the place. And then these girls were selected for Tallinn to go to US.
That's amazing. That's amazing. You, you are exceptional and I can't wait for you to get to high school so you can get DECA.
Well, you can know too, we've had others, there are other students actually in this room that have also participated in invention convention. But we also have a current eighth grader who um, is actually, one of the awards she received at states with us was the, were the services of a patent attorney. And she is currently has two patents in process. And that whole process is completely uh, pro bono by the attorney for her work. And she was recognized at nationals for different things as well. But, so we've had a lot of success with invention convention. It really starts with the grade six teachers and you know, Mrs. Lehman is here has been a real um, you know, force behind that and, and moving that program forward. And I know sometimes people get really like, this is too hard. And honestly, it's, it is, but it's the rigor and it's pushing kids and reaching for, you know, more and doing better and learning how to, you know, go through a process and a long-term commitment. And yes, it's hard, but yes, it's really worth it too.
And I want to just, I mean, offer my congratulations, not only to both of you, that your, your projects are amazing, both of them. But, but also to the, the parents, the teachers and the mentors. You know, what, what thrilled me listening was not just the invention, but the changes that happened in between. The thought process, how do I make this better? How do I change what I have to, to advance it? And then to get up here and stand in front of all these people and present in such a professional manner is amazing. It doesn't happen either. But thank you to all of you. Dr. Willett, you got to get a picture.
Yeah.
Mr. Lehman will be so.
Yeah. This has to come out for Lehman. He'll take a picture with the honorees here. Why don't you stand right here?
Get closer back.
Where is Mr.? Sorry.
Turn a little bit, turn a little bit, turn a little bit.
Everybody good? Everybody ready? All right, we're going to do it on three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Good job. Well, just to miss, Miss Estes was talking and Miss Lehman is also. Both of you, just to give us a minute, thank you for all your efforts. So our next, uh, our next exciting honorees of the evening were young ladies that had uh, written essays for Women's History Month. So as, as you may know, March is Women's History Month. Our sixth graders participated in a women's history essay contest to write about important women in Connecticut history and how their contributions affected the nation and them personally. The students not only took a lot of time to write the essays, they went through a large revision process and Senator Gordon is here to honor them. Uh, and it was part of a, a opportunity Senator Gordon made available to us in the school system. So thank you, Senator Gordon. I don't want to take that from here and honor them. I don't necessarily want to read the names because I, I'm sure you're going to be introducing them or you know, search orders.
That's it.
Okay?
Big crowd here tonight. So, but I want to thank the Board of Education and Superintendent for letting me crash your party. And present the awards. This is, as a Senator, this is the fun part of my job, which is to recognize people's achievement, including student achievement. Uh, and it's, I wish that we could do even more of that for recognizing the wonderful things that get done. But this is for Women's History Month and we asked people if they wanted to write essays, uh, highlighting important women in Connecticut history. And I'd be remiss if I didn't call out one special woman in Connecticut history, which is my wife. Who lets me not be at home at night so I can be here, enjoy this. So that's how I've stayed married for twenty-seven years. Uh, is to thank her, but it is great just not to recognize all the achievements that women have made in Connecticut, even before we became the state. Uh, but for students to learn about that history, write about that history, share that history. I've read all the essays and they're wonderful. I wish I could hire them for my speechwriters. You do a much better job than uh, what I write, but this is a, a recognition, a state citation on behalf of the state of Connecticut. So each one of the ones who I'm going to read their name, you are now in the history books, somewhere in the archives of Connecticut. Uh, but these, these are official recognitions, uh, but I would like to welcome up, if I can have, when I read your name, come on up. I'm going to read one citation. I won't read all four. They're all the same, I'm learning, but I will, I will, I will give you your citation. So the first one is uh, Genolae Wogan. Now, if you want to come on up. Well, you got Bologna Sanchez, which I did not know about her, but you're welcome to come up here. But it was wonderful to hear about uh, about her history and contribution to Connecticut. I'll have you, this is an official citation if you want to hold it. Stacy Oliver. You wrote about Sarah Harris. And I'll mention after I get out the citations, just a quick uh, uh, sentence about each one of these notable women. We have uh, Brooklyn Stanley. Keep that there for you. I am a doctor, but I don't know if I can make you better appeal up. And Natalie Herbert. And this been I quickly mentioned, and I do have it written down here so I can make certain I got it right, that Maria Palon Sanchez is notable for Puerto Rican American educator and civil rights advocate. Another civil rights advocate that people have written about. Sarah Harris is also known to be a civil rights advocate. Prudence Crandall, which we hear a lot about here in Connecticut, educator and a civil rights advocate. And then Ella Grasso, who has the honor of being the first woman governor of Connecticut. And I'm sure as we move forward in the history of Connecticut, will not be the only uh, female governor that will have uh, in Connecticut and Connecticut's future. But I'll read one of the citations, uh, and then happy to uh, let everybody congratulate you. So this is on behalf of the state of Connecticut, the General Assembly. And this is on behalf of me, state senator, but also the rest of the Tallinn delegation, Representative Tim Ackert, Representative Tammy Nuccio, and be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly, and I add this part in, which is the state of Connecticut, hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to each one of you in recognition of participation in the Women's History Month Essay Contest. Your well-written essays on important women in Connecticut's history and how their contributions to the state and to our country affect me and all of us truly captures the importance of leadership, determination and trailblazing spirit. We commend you for your commitment to academic excellence and best wishes for continued success in your studies and future endeavors. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success, which I know each one of you will do moving forward. Given on this day, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, it's signed by the President Pro Tem of the Senate, Senator Looney, the Speaker of the House, Matt Ritter, and the Secretary of the State, Stephanie Thomas. And to prove that this is official, there's even a gold seal. I don't know if it's real gold, but it is a gold seal. So, so more than happy to present it uh, to each one of uh, you. So I think it's Natalie. See if I have these in order. This, Genolae is yours, right? And Stacy. Congratulations on a job. Very well done. Do you want to be, guys want to be in the picture or we'll do a picture with Barbara? Sure, you guys want to come on? We can have them all come in if you guys wanted to come in or.
Guys want to come take a picture?
Very much so. Write about.
Hold on one second.
All right, so our, our next honorees tonight are from our DECA. Uh, as you know, DECA is an amazing organization in our school system. And it's led by amazing teachers, Lynn Bridge and Lori Hysbit. I'd like to bring up Lynn Bridge to uh, introduce our honorees tonight for DECA. Also, Senator Gordon will be giving our DECA honorees a commendation as well.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm happy to be back with my amazing DECA kids. And I also want to say to these upcoming students, the Innovation Challenge winners, as well as the young essay writers. And I also want to say to these upcoming students, the Innovation Challenge winners, as well as the young essay writers, DECA in high school. Um, as you know, DECA has been a club here for thirteen years at Tolland High School. We have gone from being, having no idea what we were doing at our very first competition to being one of the top three clubs in the state. Uh, we have numerous state presidents, one of them on your board, as well as one in your audience, up and coming, as well as various board members that were part of the state DECA organization. We have sixty to eighty students in the club every year, which is amazing for an after-school club. Sixty to eighty students every year, some years, one year right before COVID, we even got over a hundred. And these students come every Thursday after school, thirty, forty-five minutes after school, where they practice their presentation skills, as well as we've been putting a little bit of emphasis on those test-taking skills as well. Okay, because they're all of the students that compete at DECA, whether they are part of a team of two people or individuals, they must take a hundred-question test, and then they get in front of the judges where they have to pitch their ideas. So it is Innovation Challenge, but in an instant. They are given a case study and they need to present. So we took, uh, we had sixty-six students in the club this year. We took thirty-nine students to the state competition that wanted to compete. And out of those thirty-nine, we had fifteen that finished in the top five in their category. So we're looking at a forty-five percent hit rate. And we have eight students that are going on to the international competition Friday morning. So we leave Friday morning for a week. It's a six-day trip. Um, I have with me tonight, we have four seniors, five juniors, three sophomores, and a freshman that have all placed in the top five. And some of those will be heading to Nationals. I would like to turn it over to our president of DECA right now, Willsey. Willsey is going to be heading to the international competition for the second time. She'll give you a little bit about what DECA is and what it means to her. And it is notable to say that Willsey last year came in fifth, sixth.
Sixth.
In the world, love to say that, sixth in the world, uh, for apparel and accessories marketing.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Willsey Zoner, and I am serving as the current president of Tolland DECA, as well as an incoming Connecticut DECA State Officer. These past two years, DECA has transformed my high school experience. As president, I've had the privilege of leading a passionate team of students in organizing competitions, community service, and professional development events. We've grown not just in numbers, but in competence, creativity, and collaboration. Now, as a state officer, I'll be working with students across Connecticut, Connecticut to expand DECA's reach and impact, helping others discover the same leadership potential that I've been fortunate enough to develop here in Tolland. I want to thank our school staff and this board for supporting DECA, as it is not just a club, but a launchpad for future leaders. Thank you.
If it works for you, I can have them come up, introduce themselves, the category that they competed in. So, Michael.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Michael Wiggins. And I've been Tolland DECA for about two years now, and I'm going to go for four years as a senior. And I really do love how DECA has shaped me, especially in high school. And the first year, I didn't know what I was doing half the time. So I had to take advice from as many people as I could. Like last year, it was, I believe, Josh Reed, Su Long, and Willsey over there who helped me, especially during states, because she had the same time as me, and it was the best time ever. She gave me so much advice right before my, um, role play, and I feel like it helped me a lot, especially with the support I was giving beforehand. And this year I did try harder, to say the least. I got top five in states, which I feel like is pretty good. It's not sixth in the world, but. Oh, I, I got top five in the world for marketing communication. And yeah, it was really good this year. I loved the talking with all these DECA members from across the state. Uh, my new friend Trevor, which I found in the line of lunch, is a really amazing guy. He goes to Milltown. Yeah. And I really do just love going to DECA every Thursday, connecting with my friends, trying to grow as a person, and also improving on how I can perform at competitions and in presenting in general. Like Danny over there, he's a freshman, and he's one of the best freshmen I have seen do perform in role plays and just in academics in general. He's been a very amazing member, and I'm glad to have him in DECA, and I'm glad that he got top five as well.
As you heard, Danny is a freshman, just joined DECA and already top in the state.
Good afternoon, everyone. Senator Gordon, thank you for having me. So my name's Danny, and I competed in retail merchandising marketing. So as a freshman, I came in, everyone was very welcoming, and the meetings were very well structured, and they really helped develop my skills. Definitely picked up on a lot of business vocab for my first year and really learned how to think on the fly through these cases. As you get the case, you get ten minutes to prepare an entire presentation. And then from there, you get ten minutes to present with questions included in that. So that was a very interesting experience for me through states. Like Michael over there, we actually came back from a different competition yesterday, the J Innovation Challenge, and we won second in the state for that as well, along with Willsey's team that got first in the state for that competition as well. So DECA has really helped me prepare throughout business, has really helped launch me into business, give me that experience early on. Thank you.
My name is Will Murphy. I, uh, compete in personal financial literacy. This is my first year in DECA. I'm a junior. And I just, I really feel like it like helped prepare me, it helped show me like what like business is all about. And it helped, like, help me decide that business is one of the things I want to pursue, like later in my career and into college.
Hello, everyone. My name is Michaela DeChico, and I competed in DECA this year. Um, this was my first year coming back since freshman year. Um, I think that I've been able to gain so much experience from being part of DECA, not only in the business aspect, but in general, I feel like my presentational skills have been so like so much better. And I honestly do feel like the, um, experiences that you get in DECA, not only from a business perspective, but from the social, socially as well. I've met so many incredible people, so many talented people, and it has really just changed how I present, how, um, I view DECA, how I view business. Uh, I'm extremely grateful for this opportunity, and, um, I was, I came in fourth for, um, buying and merchandising this year in states. Um, and again, I'm just so incredibly grateful for all the opportunities that I've been able to get from this incredible club and from the incredible people that I'm able to work with every Thursday. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kayla House. I'm a junior and a first-year DECA member. I was partners with Michaela in the state competition for buying merchandising. We placed fourth, which is pretty good for our first year. I am not interested in pursuing business in my career, but even despite that, I think this club has given me so much in terms of zenting, performing under pressure, learning to work with others, and ultimately, I think has prepared me a lot in for college, career, and life in general. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Hello, Senator. Thank you for having Tolland DECA here tonight. We really all appreciate it. Um, just a word on behalf of DECA, it's really a great opportunity. It's given me some great experiences, really elevated my, um, present, presentation skills, um, confidence. And a shout out to Willsey, Ms. Nesbit, and Ms. Nesbit, and Mrs. Bridge. Uh, I would not have been able to get third for automotive services marketing if it were not for you guys. So thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Hi, my name is Ryan Hurd. Um, I am a second-year member in DECA and as well as a sophomore. Um, I competed in business services marketing, and I was awarded second. So lucky for me, I will be able to compete at the international competition in Orlando this Friday. Um, DECA has been an amazing experience for me. I've learned presentate, present, presenting skills, um, public speaking skills, as well as just critical thinking skills. And these skills will not help me, help me with college, but as well as life and being coming a better person and being able to communicate with others. I'm very thankful for all the members here. Um, they've really supported me throughout my journey, and they are truly the reason I am able to compete at internationals.
Hello, my name is Madeline Capser. I'm a senior at Tolland High School and a fourth-year DECA member. Um, this year I got second in the state with food marketing services, so that was fun. It was my first time placing at states. Um, I'm not going into business at all in college, but I think that DECA has definitely helped me a lot with my public speaking. Um, freshman year, I would have never been able to stand up in front of a room of people and say anything. And I definitely recommend it to anyone. Um, yeah, I wouldn't forget going into DECA. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cecilia Reese Gyro. I'm a sophomore at Tolland High School. Um, I joined DECA as a freshman, and honestly, I had no idea what I was doing that entire year. In the spring, I decided to run for DECA officer. After making it, I worked with my team of fellow officers and really gained strong friendships with these fellow people. I ran a community service project that incorporated all of the town's community. And I felt like this was an amazing way to bring DECA into our town and make it a better community for everyone else. I placed first in business services marketing this year, and I'm hoping to do well in ICDC. I honestly cannot thank DECA enough, Ms. Bridge, Ms. Nesbit, for all the opportunities that I have now and in my future. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ashvi Shaw. I'm a senior at Tolland High School, and I'm a fourth-year DECA member. I compete, uh, in sports and entertainment marketing with my partner Audrey. And we are going to the international competition this Friday, and we will be competing in school-based enterprise, since we're the school store managers. So we'll be competing on behalf of the school store, and I decided to join DECA once I saw what the club was about. And realistically, I just saw that they got to go to Disney. But after, after joining, I did learn that it was a lot more than that. It's about leadership and connections. And through the connections that I've made, I've, I got one of my best friends, Jacqueline Sterling, who has graduated. And she began the National Business Honor Society, and this is the first year that we're implementing it. And I have the honor to say that I'm the first president of it, and we are completing our community service project in a couple of weeks, which is super exciting. Thank you.
My name is Audrey McCowen. I am a third-year DECA member and the vice president of our chapter. I compete with my friend Ashvi Shaw in sports and entertainment marketing, where we got fourth place. And we will be competing at Nationals in school-based enterprise. Um, being able to run the school store through DECA has been such an amazing opportunity. I've run it this semester. I'll be running it last semester. I love being able to really find that entrepreneurial sense within myself that I would not have been able to find without running the school store. You know, I still would not say I loved business. It's hard to even say I would like business, but I do like talking. And I like talking to people. I like talking, please, I like talking about things, to talk. And if you like to talk, you can go. When you know how to talk, you can do anything. When you know how to communicate, you can do anything, but you can't know how to communicate without getting that experience. DECA gives you that experience, and I wouldn't have gotten that from any other place. So DECA has absolutely changed my perspective on being a listener, being a learner, and being a talker. And that's DECA.
Hi, my name is Sophia Cunningham. I'm a, I'm an outgoing state officer for Connecticut DECA. I got, I came in first for hotel lounge management. I'm sort of a four-year member. My freshman year, I didn't really do anything in DECA. I just joined because in eighth grade orientation, all you heard was, "Join DECA, join DECA." And you guys should totally join DECA. It really is as amazing as people hype it up to be. Um, sophomore year, and then, um, Mrs. Bridge really pushed me to compete, and it was amazing. I've got Nationals all three years I've been competing, and it is truly an amazing experience. We see really right now that like there's not many social skills going on and that people, they're not communicating as like frequently as they once were. Um, DECA really changes that. You meet people from all over the world, like I meet kids from China, Minnesota, um, Wisconsin. And it's really amazing. Even Delaware, crazy. Um, and if you're always like mutual, you meet slightly different perspectives. And truly, you gain public speaking skills. Most of it, you just need people skills, which you really need today. Um, but truly, like DECA, it changes your life. It's not just some like hyped-up club. It's amazing, and I feel like everyone here has attested and can attest to that. And it's more than a club. It's a really great environment of people where you can learn and grow. And maybe even like during past competitions, you get lucky enough to have a board of a member judge you. That was pretty awesome. Um, so yeah, you just get so many amazing skills from DECA. And like my freshman year, I didn't really want to go into business at all. I was kind of like going to something rural college, like out in the west. This is first talking out of that, but after DECA, I'm going to business college, which is pretty cool. So yeah, DECA really like impacts you in every part of your life. Thank you.
So I do want to bring up one more thing. You have met all of our DECA members, starting with Willsey, our incoming state officer, ending with Sophia, our outgoing state officer. But last night, as Michael brought up, we had Michael, stand up, Michael, Danny. We had Cecilia, we had Willsey, we had Ashvi, stand up a second. Uh, we went to the Junior Achievement Innovation Challenge last night. It was statewide. There was multiple, I think there was five, like you had to compete to get into the state final. It was held at Quinnipiac University. Uh, Michael, Danny, and their partner Savannah came in second place. Uh, so they did amazing. And then, uh, Willsey and Ashvi and Cecilia came in first place and were awarded a ninety-two thousand dollar scholarship. A piece.
Wow.
For Quinnipiac University, so. Turn it over to you. Thank you.
Two things. Don't forget to leave with. And second, Senator. Well, I didn't, I didn't bring water bottles. But next time I should. Especially nice big ones. So I get the honor to publish, uh, give each of you a state citation. I can tell you after listening and watching each one of you present, uh, you certainly embody what I've learned about DECA, which is future leaders and entrepreneurs of Connecticut and of our country. Uh, I wish that I could say I did something as great as you guys did when I was your age. But I think back then, I was taking a lot of fun science after-school clubs and finding creative ways to avoid gym. So very impressive for what you guys did. Uh, and we can use you at the Capitol, so anytime you want to fill in for me, I'll take a day off, and we'll be in good hands with each one of you. So phenomenal what you guys are doing. I won't read each one of the citations, so we'll be here all night. Uh, but, uh, I'll read, uh, uh, one of them. It applies to all of you, and then I'm happy to call your name. I don't think these are in any particular order. Happy to present to you the official citation. But this is from the state of Connecticut, the General. This is from the state of Connecticut, the General Assembly, which is the Senate and the House. And this is on behalf of myself, Senator Jeff Gordon, Representative Tammy Nuccio, and Representative uh Tim Acker. And be hereby known to all of the Connecticut General Assembly and the state of Connecticut. Hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to each one of you. In recognition of. Your award and your achievement at the DECA competition, and it sounds like there's going to be even more. Uh achievements and awards coming up in the in the future from what I'm hearing. Your creativity, teamwork and enthusiasm and your professionalism made a strong impression and represent. All in community and our state of Connecticut very proudly. The Connecticut General General Assembly is honored by your achievement, and I was also going to add very impressed by your achievement. And the entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion. And expresses the hope for continued success given on this day, April twenty third, twenty twenty five. And each one is signed by President Pro Tem Rooney. Speaker of the House Ritter, Secretary of State Thomas, and yes, indeed, each one does carry the gold seal to make it official. So happy to congratulate uh each one of you and give you the um citations of Ashvi Shaw. Cecilia Reese Drew. Sophia Cunningham. Uh Audrey McCowen. You, you did a very good job speaking, so if you ever want to break my record of three hours straight.
I definitely can.
Because I don't want to break that record that I said. Uh Michael Wiggins. Come on over here if you want. Hope I I apologize if I dispronounce any of these. Daniel Rizik. Thank you. Want to come on over? John Swiman. Bill Burford. My universe. Larry. Congratulations. Now what happened? The last dot least with Taylor, the Chicago. Very, very impressive achievements that you guys were able to do. Very proud of what you're doing. Now that we have to do pictures holding up the water bottles alone.
There's someday Nike will be, you know, your sponsor.
You have very, very good.
That's staying.
So our our last honoree is a night is um somebody very special. All of you are very special. But very special to me and to the staff here and to the students at Talon High. Sorry, Talon Public Schools. Um I've actually known this individual for many, many years. I know of her humble beginnings at Wellington Pizza, another product placement. For donations. She was amazing then, making amazing things happen. I want to get that. She has since been making amazing things happen for the Talon Public Schools. We're so lucky tonight to be able to uh finally honor her in the way that she deserves. Um she has won the Excellence in Social Studies Award from the Connecticut Council of Social Studies, which is a no small thing because they're very picky people. They selected her. So it's incredible. Also, thanks to Ms. Hickey, who also nominated her for this. So uh I'd like to introduce you to Tiffany Reynolds, who is our honoree tonight for getting this award and have Ms. Hickey play a few nice scenes.
Only been a principal at TMS for about just over a year. And Tiffany stuck out from the start as someone who had a contagious lab. Um would let me know if I was saying the right or wrong thing by some looks. And when you're in her classroom, the students having fun while learning. It's always student centered. Her big focus this year has been on inquiry. And I think the best thing about going into Ms. Reynolds' classroom is that the students aren't like, is this right? Is this right? Is this right? They're focused on the inquiry aspect of learning. They're not focused on the claim or the end result. Um but the way that she teaches is testament to the fact that the more you find out, the less you actually know. Like it opens up more doors of what you can now look into in terms of inquiry, and I think that's amazing. Um she doesn't just impact TMS. Just in one of our in-service days, she actually led a district-wide. Um PD on inquiry on divergent thinking, lateral thinking, the metacognition behind the thinking. And that's what we want to model for students, that what are you thinking about? Why are you thinking it? Where are you moving forward? Not just a, did I get it right? Um that's real teaching, teaching that metacognition and the thinking about thinking. Um staff were vastly amazed that what she taught them. So she's already impacting students in other classrooms and other schools as well. And then something that really sets Ms. Uh Reynolds apart would be her deep commitment to equitable outcomes. So she really just believes that I'm going to meet every single individual student where they're at. And I'm going to support them as much as possible as a whole student academically, socially, behaviorally, everything. And all of the students, when you walk in, they're, hi, Mrs. Reynolds. They're so excited to learn from her. Um it's an exciting classroom to be in, and it's excellent teaching. So you have an unwavering commitment, and you deserve all of this recognition. So thank you.
I'd like to say. Um I'm very lucky. I I did meet Walt way before I was became a teacher. He actually met me. I was in college. I was speech thing, and I was trying to figure out what I was going to do with my life. Um and I went back to school. I had a degree in economics and I said, no way am I sitting in a business world. And I wanted to make a positive impact. And my whole life. I always said, I just want to do good things for people. And uh originally I wanted to become a politician. And I wanted to fight children's rights, and then I said, I'm not going to be good at that because I do make faces and people can read my face pretty easily. Um but and then I decided my sister was going to become a teacher, and then I decided to become a teacher, and I paid through it, which your wage thing. And Walt used to come in with his little kids in car seats, and I used to wait on him and his wife and his children back in the day. And he said, hey, if you need a sub job, come on in, and I knocked on his door. And that's how I ended up in Talon. I've been here for fifteen years, and I hope that I get to retire in this district. And with that being said, I'm looking in the room and I'm like, I'm getting goosebumps because. My former student is sitting on this board. My other former student is sitting on the town council, you know, which is blowing my mind because it's really weird and full circle because. In my mind, Jaden, I still see the seventh grade version of you and the bubble penmanship. I know what your handwriting still looks like in my mind. Um same as Ashvi's, so. It's really kind of interesting and Willsey's as well. So it's very interesting. Um but congratulations to all of you guys for all of your success. I'm so proud of you. Um I just want you to choose your dreams, and I want you guys to make the world a better place. So I hope I helped a little bit on that journey. I hope I continue with love you on that journey, uh whatever I could do. So thank you. And um yeah, thanks for all your support. And you know, I have to say. This is crazy coming for me because the new teacher evaluation plan has allowed me space. It has allowed me space to explore the things that I want to do in the classroom. And Walt, Board of Education members, please pass that on to the other cave members. Pass that on to the other boards. Um the change has been good. It's helped me. It's made me able to explore the things that I'm passionate about, the things that I've wanted to do in my classroom that I have not had the chance to explore. Ms. Hickey has offered me the support um to encourage me to do that. So I appreciate it.
So uh do you have any questions for any of the honorees tonight or anything you'd like to throw out there as a board?
I just uh I want to say congratulations to this Reynolds. I mean, you know. From the words of Miss Hickey and and Dr. Willard have said, you know, as a board member and therefore that you're a member of our staff. As a parent, I'm so excited that my daughter will one day attend your classes. Thank you for everything you do and the passion that you give her. It's very sweet. Two things, one, two things. Number one, something stuck with me. Ma- uh Matt, Michael. Michael, you were speaking a little while ago, then I'm going to get to Ms. Reynolds. No. And you said something along the lines of my first two years, I was asking for advice off the wall. I was asking for advice, but don't stop. No matter how much you think you know, don't stop. That's that's. I was fortunate and Mrs. Bridge knows uh quite a few who do have a lot of mentors who who who. One of them walked me into Mrs. Bridge's room my freshman year and said, this is going to be, you know, your net, one of your, one of your, one of your next DECA students and. And you know, even after he graduated, I kept, I kept bugging, I kept, you know, I kept, you know. Not pestering him, but you know, poking, hey, Matt, do you have a little, you know, do you have a little, what did you do here? Um so so it just made me think, and I I'm just so proud to. Gosh, that's a really, that's really, really cool that you you sort of acknowledged your, you know, willingness to take advice from other people and. And not just, you know, go along sort of one way of thinking, but well, again, there's a lot, a few ways I can go about this. So. So well done to all of you. This is, I mean, I never get sick of seeing that. I I think I've made that very clear over the last however many years. Um I never, ever, 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 if we could do this every meeting, I would have you guys come in here and have a meeting. So so to DECA, I mean. Holy cow, you got me shaking over here. Like, congratulations. Um you guys are awesome. And then Ms. Reynolds. Had in uh seventh grade, modern world geography. Modern world geography. Um and everything you were just saying, Miss Hickey, about, you know, like. All the students getting, you know, excited to go and miss. Oh, my gosh, that was, that was, that was the same case back. I don't want to do the math as to where you have like, but it was the same case back then, and it's it it goes to show. You know, not just having those skills now, but the fact that those skills have have sort of been constant throughout those last. I don't know however many years um is a testament. And so, you know, eh I can't thank you enough personally. But again, sort of to what the Chairman Holt said, you know, sitting in on on this side, don't take that weird, sitting on this side. I have, after these last four years, I have a deep sense of gratitude for the both of you. Ms. Estebas, I see you back there, Ms. Nesbit, Mrs. Bridge. Any other staff and Mr. Swanson, I see you over there. Any other staff? Um I I I again, just I I I wish all of you could get acknowledged in 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 some sort of way every year. I mean, this is. Um this is tremendous. So thank you, Ms. Reynolds, for everything you do. So well done. Well done.
Zach Willis, you want to get a picture with Ms. Reynolds?
I'm gonna let. Daniel, you want to say something?
Oh, of course. I always want to say something. Um so first of all, this is, this is. One of the main reasons, I mean, this is the reason why I'm going for the education. This is what makes Talon so great. Um my face hurts from smiling tonight. Um I see these administrators and and staff members that have impacted my family personally. And I see some faces, some that I've known since kindergarten, preschool. Um and I see, you know, our sixth, seventh, eighth graders and our high school students. We have the futures right here in town. And this is what it's all about. So I just appreciate everything that you all do for our students. You're amazing. Um and DECA, I mean, I can't go to sleep without thinking about DECA because of what Jaden said about DECA, so. Um just what it's, what these clubs and what these educators and what these extra activities that you guys are doing to help. Build your education and make an impact. Um the future is bright and it's here tonight. So thank you and congratulations.
I would just like to congratulate everyone in the room. Amazing job in representing Talon, and we're so proud of all of you and. Teachers and students alike and just the mentorship and camaraderie and so forth. This is amazing to see. And it's really nice just to have kind of a a positive vibe here in the room tonight. So congratulations to everyone.
As we close, and the guys of the the shameless plug to the students, the skills you're learning, both writing. And and speaking and presenting and organizing, and as somebody mentioned. These chairs up here are waiting for you. Okay, that you absolutely are the leaders, not only of our future, but of our presence as, you know, Audrey is a student rep. Or Jaden is a a recent graduate. Or her, yeah, okay, but my point being. Your your community, your state, your your country, your world is ready for the skills that you already have. So thank you.
So at this point in the evening, the purpose has been to award you and honor you, not to drag you through a painful. Three hour, four hour meeting. So at this time, if you would like, we could take maybe a five minute res- uh you know, just break for a second. Allow you to all to stand up and gracefully, you know, head out.
Wonderful. Please do your story for him, you're right.
Right.
All right. Do we have any additions to the agenda? Right, seeing none, no minutes to approve. Public participation. Members of the Talon Board of Education welcome the members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner. Follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting set setting. Those in the room will actually make yourself known. If you're online, raise your Zoom hand and we will call. As always, begin with your name and address for the minutes. Going twice. Clothing. Public participation correspondence.
Uh no emails given.
Point to information. And this is something that can be talked outside of the meeting and whatnot, but uh I think something to consider, we were chatting over here. It's something to consider, you know, in future meetings and whatnot, you know, the good feeling that just brought me. That's not going anywhere, you know. But then we get into, you know, whatever's coming next, and and I completely understand because we need to get to. Um something to consider moving forward is some sort of around this time of year, some sort of acknowledgement-based meeting where, you know, we're sticking true to, you know, acknowledge. you know, we're sticking true to, you know, acknowledging the students and the staff and whatnot, um, and in giving them that sort of, that sort of dedicated time, that's something along those lines. So again, that's a twenty twenty-six summer-ish, spring-ish problem now, but um, something to consider. I just wanted to get it across because I think it's a great idea. I think it's, you know, let's give them that spot. So, that's all.
An acknowledgement-only meeting?
Bingo. Bingo.
I like that. Every other one?
That you want to meet? Every. Well, if we need to throw a special meeting together, we throw a special, but, but I think the idea, the premise of, you know, let's give them the, let's give them the, the, the respective, you know, you know, if, and if we're done by eight thirty, we're done by eight thirty. But it, it, the, the premise is that made me feel really good. And, and it's, you know, it's hard to transition into this stuff after that. So, uh, so that's all, that's all. That's all. Anybody else?
Yeah, I don't think anyone disagrees with you, Jaden. Now, what we just did is all of our favorite part of why we serve on this board. So, you know, I think everyone's in agreement with you that, that's something that we should seriously consider doing.
Anybody else?
All right. Student Representatives report.
It has been a while since I was doing this on your level. So that takes some getting used to. All right, Miss Bridge kind of stole my thunder with the Junior Achievement Innovation Challenge, but the state championships for that happened yesterday. We sent two teams of Talon, one team, Ashby Shaw, Cecilia Reese-Giro, and Willsey Zoner, the other, Danny Terrasa, uh, Michael Wiggins and Sabina Davis. The first team came in first place, second team came in second place. First team each won a scholarship worth ninety-two thousand dollars if they choose to attend Quinnipiac University, which is absolutely amazing. I want to give a little shout out. That was my team. I chose to go to work instead. Uh, so missed out on that. But it is truly, truly so special, so much fun. It was a really great day. Uh, and or night. Moving on, prom tickets. Full tables were sold on Tuesday. And today, they sold tickets for groups of four or more people going to prom. And everyone else can buy their tickets tomorrow. And tomorrow is the last day to buy a prom ticket. So if you want to go to prom, all of you, I know you all want to go to prom. It is due tomorrow. I know my tickets were already bought. There's like a group leader that, for each group, that is sent off to buy all the tickets, gave her a hundred dollars, stopped my hands.
Where do you think you event that?
Uh, it is at the AquaTurf this year. Um, so, it was at the AquaTurf last year as well. Bit of a drive, beautiful venue. Uh, used for weddings. Wish it was like thirty minutes closer, not in my control. Um, moving on even more, back to business, I C D C. Let's get a little dancing moment. We're all gonna dance. Pretty dancing. So I C D C, uh, is the international competition for Deca this year is held in Orlando, Florida. Um, we are leaving, ten Talon students are leaving on Friday morning, this time not at four AM, instead at seven AM. Very nice. Um, it is a six-day fun zone. It is absolutely a blast. You, we will be going to Disney, we'll be going to Universal, we'll be going to city walks and restaurants, and a lot of fun stuff. But embedded deep within that, we are going to be at conferences, competitions, we're gonna be taking tests. We're going to be networking, meeting people, getting little pins. That's my favorite part. We have a big pin trading day. Um, it is absolutely a joy. It is so much fun. Everyone comes home with something different. And we usually come home with a winner, or two, or three, or four of it. And hopefully we do aim to do that again this year. And finally, for the high school, there is a speaker coming in for a special Eagle Block on Monday uh, to talk about the dangers of drunk driving, especially during prom week. We really like to focus on the dangers of drunk driving and irresponsible decisions during prom week. So a speaker will be coming in documenting their experience with that. Uh, and why it's important to think about that before making any decisions on that night. Any questions?
Can you, I'm sorry, go. Oh, I have a question. I just would wonder, how come you have to have like a group to get a prompt to get, like, why isn't it open to everyone from the get-go?
So, uh, it is open to everyone. It's just the first day uh, is only for big tables, just to make sure that we have the amount of tables that are set. So those are blocked off. And then there are groups of four or more, uh, and those tables will usually be combined. And then on Thursday, if you want to go into, if you want to just give your ticket individually, if you want to do it with the group too, uh, you can do so. It's just to make sure that we have people sitting together who want to sit together first, and then we can make sure that we have enough tables for everyone.
I wanted you to expand on that, um, the drunk driving. What, what is that again?
So a speaker is coming in and she's going, or they're going to be, uh, talking about not only their experience with drunk driving, um, but how it impacts people, uh, the dangers of it, why people do it. Um, and it's been happening for a few years. It's a very impactful presentation. It's very emotional, but it serves a great message. Um, we're lucky enough to have, not have many dangerous situations of that, especially last year we didn't. So it's a, it's a really good, important presentation. It's, uh, for seniors and juniors only. Um, I unfortunately will be missing it this year because I'll be at Universal, no. Um, but, no, it's a fantastic presentation, very important, very timely. Um, and it's pretty great overall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be safe.
Um, as much as I would love to hear about the lower panel, uh, Miss Bridge, as you probably saw, aside, no, I know. I mean, like, in the back when she was already there. I know that's Mr. Swanson. Uh, she assigned me a lot of homework. And, you know, I think that it is so impactful what we do here. I also think it's so impactful that I don't not do the homework and get yelled at by Mrs. Bridge. So, thank you all very much.
Best of luck to you.
Maybe I'll sit here again. I only have like three meetings left before I leave forever. Keep that in mind.
When, 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 when student council, you mean, last month? Is it at the end of the school year? June night sometime. Audrey, good luck. Have fun. Enjoy it.
All right. Committee and the liaison reports. Communication?
Uh, we had a meeting today, set a few, um, summer schedule, shored that up. Uh, it's on the website. And, uh, we talked about a, um, notice that's gonna go out. We're just reminding people to vote. Um, years past, we're reluctant to do so, but the, the notice is just gonna go out, not to sway things one way or another, but similar to kind of what the, the town council and the towns have been doing and just letting people know uh, when the vote is to hopefully get more people out of the vote because the, it's so dismal. But who knows how many years, so. Just gonna be a straight go and vote on this day and provide a few links to the town's webpage and the budget page. That's about it. So, there'll be two, one next Monday and I think the Monday then before election. Or, you know, the election reference. So that's what's going on there.
Ready? Kirk.
We met today, um, we as well shared up summer schedule, but we also had a discussion about, um, specific to the high school, the, the scheduling and why we do the four block schedule as opposed to six or seven forty-five minute periods. And, you know, we talked about the, uh, the study that was done in two thousand sixteen, eighteen, two thousand eighteen, and what the results of that study were, um, and why we are choosing to utilize the type of scheduling that we currently have.
Is that study in the folder?
It is, it is, yeah.
Oh, on the V O E dash.
Yes.
At the bottom.
Uh, we met today, um, we talked about, uh, the use of school facilities, uh, the fees for in-town folks and out-of-town folks, and what that looks like. Um, we had some class references in, for a few towns, Avon, North Branford. Um, so Dr. Willard is pulling a few more uh, communities, specifically our neighboring communities. So, to make sure that we are, when people are using our facilities, we're not losing money there. Um, but we're also ensuring that we're keeping up with increasing costs that we incur. Um, but I will say it was quite eye-opening with how often we utilize all of our facilities from Birch Grove, T I S, the T M S auditorium, the T H S auditorium, the gymnasiums were huge. The, Dr. Will has a calendar. There's not a day that's not something that, something's happening in our facilities after hours, whether it be out-of-town folks or in-town folks, dance clubs, scouts, sports recs, all that kind of stuff. So we're looking at that to make sure that we can stay afloat and have it be balanced with the, the costs that we bring to them.
And just, just as a plug, Mr. Staba, uh, who is our, uh, facilities director, has revolutionized how we track and process building use. Um, so, you know, what they're referring to is I refer to a program called F M X. And, uh, Mr. Staba has helped us move into the twentieth century with that. And he's, uh, helping compile some data for the future as well for us to discuss with respect to, um, you know, perhaps how we might want to modify our, our building charges based and the human hours that go into the work around it. And the resources of, you know, put into it, both energy and otherwise and all of that. So.
Our facilities are used more than you can possibly imagine.
I'm watching the nodding.
That's it. Sorry.
No, you're good. Uh, F F C.
Yes, sorry, I'm, uh, remote again today. I got in, uh, from a work trip at three o'clock this morning. So, I'm thriving still. Um, F F C, no update from last month, but we, um, have a planning meeting coming on five fourteen, Walt and myself. So if there's anything uh, anyone would like to discuss in our next meeting on May twenty-first, please let us know and we'll get that, uh, included into this one and, or the next agenda if we can fit it in. So, nothing else.
So it's going to disappoint everybody, especially Bill, but I have no care person to report. Are you sure? Okay. Uh, Dr. Willard, superintendent's report, I'm K one.
So what I'd like to do tonight is, um, present to you as we discuss uh, some information about our social emotional learning programs in the Talon Public Schools. And to help me do that tonight, from left to right, we have Tom Swanson, the principal at Birch Grove, um, Celeste Estivez, who's a teacher.
Well, Celeste, yes, right there. I'm a teacher at T M S.
Um, Alyssa Hickey is our principal of Talon Middle School, and Jennifer McClarney, who is our all-around amazing para educator champion and, uh, and, uh, just amazing politician too. Many powerful people.
I do know. I was gonna say Jeff Gordon too. I'm excited. I'll wait till I see Senator Moonia next week. So.
So, you know, she's got connections. So.
Just a teacher. It's, it's parent lobby day in the legislative building. I think so.
Uh, so we, uh, we're gonna give you a flyover of the social emotional learning program. Um, what I, I do want to first apologize for where the comma is in, uh, in there. I don't know what I did with that, but I'm sure I violated some Chicago manual style rule. But I'm gonna give you a, just a flyover, uh, introduction to S E L, just to make sure everybody understands what we're talking about here. And then I'll hand it over to the, to the experts and the people that are in the trenches actually making the amazing things happen in our schools with respect to, to social emotional learning. So I shared this, um, this very brief, uh, just kind of introduction. That's a dense paragraph, but essentially, um, we use two kind of foundational, um, research and evidence-based practices for our social emotional learning program. And, uh, the first is the Yale Ruler Program. The second is really, we, we base a lot of our work in Castle. The Yale Ruler Program, um, helps uh, a frame or gives a framework to school systems for helping organize how we approach it. And, you know, ruler is the terminology that Yale uses for recognize, understand, label, express, and then regulate emotions. Really, at the, at the base level, it's about making, um, our young adults and our children more capable of recognizing an emotion in themselves. And then finding an appropriate way to both identify it and then express it. And beyond that, actually act strategically to approach the work and what they have to do with a knowledge of, um, how their emotions are impacting their own decision-making and behavior. You know, and that is an extremely useful skill. Um, there's a, uh, research in the, you know, outside of school world from, uh, Bradbury and, uh, Reeves. Uh, they published a book called E I two point O. It's a widely-used business book um, about the business world and how important it is to have emotional intelligence and be able to function in that way and recognize and regulate your own emotions in very difficult and complex situations. And so that's really what the school system is engaging in is, um, getting the kids prepared not only for math, science, and so on, but being able to walk into that meeting and, you know, create that rocket when there's complex interactions between people. And you have to get teams together and make things work. And you can't be so upset by something that someone says that you respond in a way that is not going to, you know, benefit the rest of the group. So taking that at a macro level in the work world and bringing it into schools, it helps kids behave better, act better with each other. And it helps actually everybody in the context, adults included, um, also, uh, you know, behave in the most productive way possible for everyone involved. So basically, the, the links that I provided there also, um, went to be in the folder for the Board of Ed. You can take a look at those later. But I just wanted to give you a very, very brief path, uh, flyover that it really helps with empathy, with decision-making. The definition really is just about teaching them to emotionally manage themselves and establish relationships, act appropriately with each other. It improves academic outcomes. It's been shown to do that. It reduces behavior issues. It provides a better basis of stronger mental health possibilities for kids. You know, ruler as an acronym is just recognizing the emotions, understanding causes and consequences, labeling emotions accurately, expressing emotions appropriately, and regu- regulating their emotions effectively. There's many benefits, and those benefits are research-based and widely understood in our, you know, our field, but also, as I mentioned, outside in the business field and the general world, general, generally in the world as well. Um, it does result in better academic performance and better interrelationships. Um, just another kind of aspect of it, and this, I think, Castles, the five core competencies are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making, based in evidence, uh, evidence-based work on, on how to develop that in kids. Creates a positive school environment, increases student resilience and empathy, improves interpersonal relationships between students and staff and even the broader world. And it's that long-term academic and personal, um, you know, success elements or opens up the doors for that for kids. Um, and that's why it's so important to do. And that's why we do it as a foundational element of our programming. Okay? So I wanted to just give you that pretty quick flyover and then kind of let each of the individuals here speak to how it plays out in their school. So we have elementary representation and then, you know, and secondary representation tonight. And we can also, you know, over time, the, invite others in from the high school and so on to, to talk to it there because it's across the whole district. But uh, they, they were kind enough to make themselves available tonight. So I, I wanted to, you know, honor their, uh, you know, their levels. And, uh, we can talk to any other level a long way. You may remember some of you that, uh, T M S sponsored a instructional rounds on S E L last year, which was amazing and done extremely well. Thanks to Miss Hickey and, um, everybody there. So they've all done various amazing things and we'll hear a little bit about it tonight. Uh, I'll start with Tom Swanson, just to kind of give us a quick flyover of, um, all the great things happening at Birch Grove. And then we'll go to Ms. McClarney. We'll jump kind of over, uh, to talk about the things she's doing in the classroom. We'll go then to Miss Hickey to talk about what's going on at middle school. And we'll wrap up with Miss Estivez. We'll talk about the teacher's perspective on it as well at that secondary level.
All right. Excellent. Well, thank you very much. That was a great flyover. You got me started. Uh, so at Birch Grove, um, this is, um, certainly an opportunity for us to form a class, as I can see a little here, uh, getting older. So, but it's a great opportunity for all students in our school to participate in a program that kind of unites us together. Our common vocabulary, expectations, uh, all the way from the little guys, the three-year-olds, to the older guys, eight-years-old. So, it's really a great, uh, framework. And it ties right in with many of the things we're already doing in the school. Uh, we have grow, grow expectations that we're doing throughout the building. We have, uh, expectations, common expectations that we're doing wherever you are in the building, whether in the hallway, you're on the bus, you're in the classroom, you're outdoors, you're indoors. Um, because it's all learning, it's all, um, we have the youngest learners, though they're all learning it together, uh, with their, with their teachers and all staff in the building. Uh, all staff have the opportunity to unite us. So, uh, Mrs. McClarney's gonna talk a little bit about, uh, keyboarding, uh, how she found a way to integrate it into our keyboarding time that students have. Um, in our master's schedule, there's time allotted in our building schedule for classrooms to, uh, Um, in our master schedule, there's time allotted in our building schedule for classrooms to uh, conduct a lesson uh, with our staff, with our students each day. So they build it in and then they have it go across a, a week and what they're working on. Uh, this is year number two for us, uh, year one for students. Uh, so it's been a great opportunity. The other thing that, you know, Mrs. McClarnie and I were talking a little bit about is if there's a really nice through line for students as they go through the years. So we're starting at age three and then age four and then kindergarten. By the time they get to the middle school, you know, they've got, you know, they've got that, uh, those skill sets that they've been working on throughout the year. So uh, we see that as a benefit, uh, having a program here in Talon. Also, when all of you came to visit our intervention services, that allows us to employ uh, additional opportunities for students to reinforce when they're in intervention services or when they're in special education services. Because uh, learners that are participating in uh, intervention and special education often need more opportunities for that growth mindset. Uh, and to develop their resilience skills and many things that uh, we do want to work with our students to support them in their growth. The power of yeah, you haven't quite got it, but you're going to get it. And it working on that mindset, which all kind of ties rather with ruler. Um, every day on the morning announcements, I uh, will introduce our, we'll have our um, announcers. We have student announcers that come and do the morning announcements and they say where they are checking in on the mood meter. Now, the mood meter is something that Miss McClarnie will talk a little bit more about. She actually did give me one. This is McClarnie gave me a little one that she'll show off. The mood meter talks about, yeah, I think you're all getting one too. But I don't want to take away all Miss McClarnie's uh, what she has to say, but uh, this is the mood meter uh, that Dr. Will was talking about. And so the way it, it, it represents is that, you know, uh, if you're feeling really excited and energy and um, high energy, then you're in the yellow. If you're, you know, you're calm, but if things are going great, you're in the green. If you're like, we're really angry, you know, then you're in the red, kind of fits for that, right? And then the blue, maybe not going so well, you're having a tough day. So, and then there's all vocabulary words that uh, attached to the mood meter. So every day, our student announcers will announce what color they are and use a vocabulary word, how they're feeling. Some say I'm chill, I'm excited, um, you know, happy, uh, looking forward, you know, all different ways. I tend to say, Miss McClarnie's gonna say it, I'll say that I'm checking in on the yellow today and I'm very excited. Uh, and, cause I'm really excited about the day. Uh, one day I did say, hey, students, I'm checking in on the red today. It's gonna be indoor recess. I'm not gonna be able to get out. You said it, you know, and teachers are like kidding around with me. They're like, you're always in the yellow. I'm like, all right, well, I'm gonna be in a different color. Or I'll say like, I'm chilled today, I'm green, you know, um, checking in on the green on the mood meter. So just another way to get it out there, get the students doing it um, and show that energy. Uh, you know, some of the things that you'll hear, uh, Mrs. McClarnie talked about how she integrates it in one of her lessons. Uh, but it's a great resource, you know, for students to attach their feelings and their emotions uh, to how they're feeling and using the vocabulary with ruler. The one thing that we do find that students are coming into the school system and their behaviors are increasing. Now, they're not very good communicators as young uh, learners, and so they act out. But, you know, going through, using a ruler uh, framework that allows us to attach words to their feelings and hey, you have a big emotion, you're showing this. And, and so it allows us as teachers and practitioners in the building to do that, so. And it's a common way for all of us. Uh, so that's a, a resource that we've been using. Also, uh, like Dr. Will was saying, it allows students to become able to solve problems on their own. You really want them to be able to become independent towards resolving conflicts. And especially, especially, I was talking to our preschool teacher today, Mrs. Merzak, who's the teacher of the year. Uh, and she does an amazing job with our little three-year-olds. Uh, and she's teaching ruler like every day and she's getting them going and uh, and she talks about how she wants to facilitate them to be able to solve disagreements at three years old. And so, you know, and they're trying to share and so it's, it really, she uses, embraces it quite a bit. Um, so, and, and it works quite well. And de-escalating, because oftentimes students might tantrum over something or get very upset. And it allows them to develop coping strategies as they work through this, uh, as Dr. Will was saying, some of the conflicts that they have. Uh, and so we also look to kind of tie it into the work of the Portrait of Graduate, you know, as to skills and disposition. So it allows us to build that framework as we're moving towards that supporting student. And Mrs. McClarnie's gonna talk a little bit about how we use it with literature and tech, you know, and then, so you can kind of infuse it through the building uh, through the classroom and wherever you are. And that's really something that's been helpful. Uh, and then really building on that vocabulary, you know, learners need to hear it over and over and over again, and it allows us to help. Um, couple of things here. This is something that we give out to parents and I can, you know, share this with you. Um, and it talks about what Dr. Will was saying, recognizing uh, what each of the uh, criteria stands for. Uh, and then there's a little mood meter. So depending on where you're feeling, you're checking on the mood meter. Um, and then, and we tell them it can change, you know, depending where you are at that moment in time. Uh, so that's something here. And then a little mini one that Mrs. McClarnie will talk about. And then here's another little handout that talks about ruler. So you're welcome, I can pass it around a little bit and um, so we have that. And then we also have, if we have um, student has a disagreement, sometimes that happens. Uh, and so we work through it and particularly as a, uh, an administrator in a building, it allows me to work through with students that had a conflict, whether it was on the recess or, or in the classroom or somewhere. And we'll go through, it's called a blueprint conference and it gives them the framework with the visuals. Our teachers made this, um, and it's wonderful. And we have an assembly on it. We show the students how to go through it. We roll by it. Uh, many of our staff members have been doing it. I was in one of the videos, acting it out, and Mr. Keith was there with me and, you know, we did, so. You kind of go through it, what are you gonna do? Melissa's gonna give you a whole different perspective, but yeah, this is probably. So we do like the little guys. Yep, we teach them how to take a deep breath, you know, and so this is the meta moment here. Um, and then what happened, and then you kind of go through the conflict, why do you feel that way? And so all classrooms have this to help them when they get through the conflict resolution. So I can pass these around to you guys, don't look at them. Uh, and then talking about, you know, expected choice, unexpected, your apology, how are you gonna solve the problem? Uh, so these are great uh, that we have, you know, how you're feeling now and what, how you're gonna handle this. And so it's been really, it's been great how we can apologize. So it, it takes some scaffolding, like they just don't do it right away. So you gotta practice it and you hope by the time you hit the middle school, they've got it down. But uh, with the little guys, there's a lot of repetition and practice, so uh, that's something that we do quite a bit. Um, we do have an amazing team that Mrs. McClarnie's on and several of our other uh, staff members. They work very closely together. They come together uh, regularly and, and they look at the ruler lessons and they try to infuse it to make it, you know, seamless for the teachers. So when the teachers go to implement it, it's, you know, they can go with it. And we look to see if there's anything that needs to be tweaked at all, and this team's been doing uh, for the last couple of years, but do a really nice job of that. So, and then I had mentioned that we do uh, grade-level assemblies uh, to support our students. So, you know, thank you to Dr. Will and supporting this and, and helping us at Birch Grove, but this is something that we've been really excited about. Uh, giving us that framework, so um, I don't want to take all Miss McClarnie's thunder, but I will hand it over to Miss McD- uh, Mr. McClarnie and.
One of my favorite pieces of advice that Mr. Swanson gives me has the new kindergarten families coming in. Let the, is win.
Yes, yeah.
Like when you're playing Chutes and Ladders, it's okay, you can win.
Yeah, yeah.
Like if the kid's used to, you know, maybe winning sometimes, not winning sometimes, and then, you know, expressing themselves.
I uh, I, I learned that personally um, from the, the, the nights that I went to the Birch Grove and first things first, it's not going well. Uh, so, I, we have some practice this summer for sure. Uh, as I have never let, uh, I've never beaten my daughter at anything. It's gonna be a rough transition for me over the next like two months, but it was heartbreaking. So, thanks so much for that, but.
It will help us in the long run.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I am Jennifer McClarnie. As you heard, I'm a para educator. My current role is as keyboarding facilitator at Birch Grove, which means I see every kindergarten, first grade, and second grade student. Um, I am a special. I'm like gym art and music. They come to me and we do keyboarding. Um, this year we instituted with our ruler program and that every other week I would do a ruler lesson. Um, the ruler lessons I do, I, I am on the district ruler committee. I'm also on the building just, a ruler committee. And we create these lessons, so um, Dr. Will is gonna help me flow through these lessons. So you would come into the keyboarding lab. Every other week we would say we're, it is time for our emotion word of the day. The emotion I chose to bring tonight, we're gonna go quick though, is worried. And we're gonna talk about what it looks like to feel worried, how it sounds, how our bodies feel. A lot of kids don't understand that um, as an adult, if someone asks you how you are, you're gonna say, fine, I'm fine, I'm okay. I'm fine, no matter what you're truly feeling, you're gonna, chances are, say, fine. It's really hard to identify your true emotion. Um, I have an app on my phone that chimes in with me about three times a day and it's really hard not to kick, click, okay, because you really, you, it's hard, try it. Um, so the word we're gonna do today is worried. So we talk to the kids about where it would land on the mood meter. I have larger mood meter in my classroom than this. And we talk about where we think it's gonna be. Hint, the, the first screen is red. So they know right off the bat, it's going in the red. The mood meter ex- expresses your um, your energy level and your pleasantness. So the up and down is your energy and across the bottom is your pleasantness, the X and the Y axis. And we talk to them how it can change through the day. So you can skip over that side. So we talk about how it's gonna feel, how it's gonna work. Does anybody know what worried means? We start talking about a little bit. There is usually a literature piece that goes in with the lesson. So ruler in its program from Yale has assigned a book list for every emotion. And we usually, as a committee, we go through and decide if the book is a great book to use or not. We go through the book, we talk about the book. How can you tell that Wimbley's worried? Can, does Wimbley have any clues that shows that she is worried? And we go through the whole book, talk about it, ask them if they've ever felt that way. One more, because we're not gonna watch this story. Go ahead, and we talk about, we, we talk about, about. And then in the classroom, so I support the lessons, so I do a feeling word of the day. The teachers also touch on this lesson. So sometimes the kids are like, we already did that word. And I'm like, but that's okay, we're gonna talk about it again. Um, is there another screen that has strategies? Yep, keep going. So then we do a pretend session. So the last, the last screen was a pretend session about, you know, pretend, um, oh, it's your first day of school and you don't see any friend you know. How would that make you feel? How would you get through it? And then go to the next slide. And we give them strategies. And I make everyone go around, I make everyone, put your finger on your nose. When you come up with a strategy on that board, that would work for you. That way they don't have to raise their hands, they don't have to talk, but I know that they're participating and I know they're thinking about a strategy that would work for them. Um, sometimes they're like, I don't see one that I like. And I'm like, but do you have one you would use? And they say, yes. So I know that they're talking about it. Some kids want to talk about everything. Some kids don't want to talk about it at all. But the fact that they're there and listening and participating, just with simple actions like that is a great thing. The last thing we do in a lesson is actually plot the word on the mood meter. So as you're working, walking around Birch Grove, you might notice, first off, there's a mood meter just about everywhere. Um, and, but some of the teachers, including myself, have our mood meter. And when we finish a lesson, I have one of the students come up and put the word where it goes on the mood meter. If we're doing a, a word, this word's in the red, so your energy level's high because you're feeling upset. And we talk about how they could bring their energy back down to be able to go on with their day. We also talk about the good emotions. Mr. Swanson's in the yellow all the time because he's excited about outside recess. And we talk about his energy level is yellow and how is he gonna bring that down? Cause that's a great emotion to be in. You can't live in yellow all the time, though. Um, and you gotta bring it down to come back to be able to do your work for the rest of the day. Say for instance, after recess, after an assembly, that kind of thing. Um, and then we plot the emotion. Ruler has great lessons. And then the last thing I do is I have a handout that I send home with the kids that I don't have with me. And I, and I said, now it's your turn to be the teacher. Can you go home and tell your family what the word worried means? And talk about a time that as a family you've felt worried. And sometimes worried is a small worry and sometimes worry is a big worry. And it's interesting to hear them communicate their feelings. And sometimes it's a simple thing, like I was worried that it was gonna be fish sticks for lunch today and I don't like fish sticks. And sometimes it was like, especially like at the beginning of the year, I'm worried I'm gonna miss the bus, you know, that kind of thing. So it, it's interesting to show them how worry can not be a huge emotion, it can be a small motion too. That is it. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any questions.
You mentioned Miss McClarnie, first of all, I'm sorry, I didn't see you behind Dr. Will.
That's all right, it's okay.
Gassed on it, but number one. Number two, um, you mentioned that these mood meters are around.
Thank you so much.
These mood meters are around. Do you see the kids or do you see the students at all throughout the day? First, let me ask this, where, by all around the school building, what do you mean by all around?
Literally all around the school. They are in the hallways, there's a cafeteria, they're in every classroom. They are literally everywhere. And there's some, there's a huge bulletin board that um, has emotions already plotted on it. So they can kind of see emotions and then, most of them are empty though, so that if we see a student who's in the having an issue, we can say, come over here, come over here, come show me where you're feeling. And sometimes they can't express the word, but they can point with, to the color.
Got you.
At our level. They can point to the color. And they, and then we can take it from there.
And have you seen how specifically, I know you've got probably certain students who have taken a little more time to adapt to these types of things. Have you seen, you know, even in your most, you know, challenged student, this sort of impact them in, in, in some sort of positive?
Definitely, definitely, especially because this is our first official year, even though we did roll out slightly last year. The strength of building that at such a young age, like all the pre-K kids that are now, that were in pre-K last year that are now in kindergarten, huge difference, huge difference in their ability to say why they're frustrated and not just kick a chair.
Right.
For fifteen minutes. They can say, you know, I can say, I can say you're upset. You know, can you tell me why you're upset? And they're like, no, but I can tell you I'm red. And then I can say, well, how can we get down to blue so that we can talk? And it help you get over it, you know, help you move on. Cause you don't want to be stuck. I mean, I, all day long, you, that's a healthy emotional person, you should, you know, hopefully be moving around the mood meter, so.
Well, that's amazing. Any other question?
Um, I think this is fantastic. So this is the first year we're using it at Birch Grove set, okay. With the students?
Yes.
Okay, and um, obviously you see a positive impact or, in fact, it's a, I think, uh, remember what it was, this is with the F R C and it was mindfulness class, but that, that she had. And you, you look at the, these littles and they have no idea how to express their anger, their frustration or whatever. It's, it's stomping and, and this and that. So I think this is, and I've heard it a lot from Miss Hickey and her presentation, so I've heard it at the middle school. I think it's so great that we're starting so young because they're the, everybody has a problem expressing emotion, right? So like, I try to be in the green and the yellow all the time and, you know, I try to say I'm a glasses half-full person, but I mean, you know, having that self-reflection, but then being able to communicate what that is or figure it out. I, I heard a lot about figuring it out from you.
Yeah, and, and it's, and it, it's great, like I can say, fine, like right now I feel fine. I mean, I have to go home and stuff piñatas for Spanish. You know, um, right. Gotta go home and stuff some piñata, but um, but I'm feeling fine, like I am in the green and I am calm. And I, like to find the other words besides fine, was what we're building. We're building their vocabulary. We're building all those. There are a ton of emotion words, so, that we don't use, so.
It also connects us as a community. Each classroom um, has individual charters where they, it's basically like setting up with the students all together to do the class rules. And then they agree how they're gonna be kind to each other, uh, what they're gonna do, what, how it's gonna, um, what their actions are gonna be in the classroom. And so by doing that framework, they all sign it, it's like creating a charter uh, for the classroom and then they refer back to it all year long. So that, that's another way to kind of pull this all together.
Yeah.
You know, in the school. So, yeah, but uh, you know, you know, Mrs. McClarnie's right. I mean, they, they can point to them or so they can express it, but we keep revisiting the vocabulary over and over and it just keeps building it for them. Yeah, it is hard to express themselves.
Yeah.
So if there are any else, kind of segue to the, to the middle school, Miss Hickey. And I'll let her do, sorry, but I'll tell you, uh, it's been great at the elementary level. And Miss Hickey, as you know from the S E L presentation last year, we've done an amazing job as, as, as it is. But there's even more that has happened since then, so I'll let her comment.
So, a majority of you were last year at the instructional rounds, so thank you so much for coming. Because I think it showed that we have advisory models at T M S, so every day for the first twelve So every day for the first twelve minutes, every single day at TMS, they start with advisory lessons. And the advisory lessons allow us one voice, one community. So all of the teachers are in advisory, every single student is in advisory. And then Tony Spangle and I are popping into various advisories throughout. Um, it allows us to be proactive. Um, it allows us to be reactive when something happens, because we get together as a committee and we say, this is what we need. This is what we're hearing from students, and we're creating lessons on effective communication, um, as a result. Um, we're still sticking with the twenty-minute advisory lessons. We did debate as a school. Like, should sixth grade, there's a big difference between sixth graders and eighth graders. Should they have the same lessons, or should we do a sixth grade lesson, seventh grade lesson, and eighth grade lesson? And what we ultimately decided, after looking at all of the qualitative and quantitative feedback, which was wonderful, it was, uh, we have to keep going, um, was the, the momentum that you build when every single person in a school building is using the exact same language. So if you're a teacher, and this was a story that a teacher shared last year, she was in the hallway, and she heard some unkind communication, and she just went straight to the advisory lesson, was that, that was taught this morning, like, hey, what do you mean when you say that? Do you remember that we just learned that? That's powerful for everyone to be able to use that language. Um, our advisory lessons are built on the ruler pillars, so we do, we start with a student charter. I think the biggest moment for me last year was when all students had to say, like, the top three ways that they were, that they wanted to feel when they were at TMS. And then we took all of those responses, and then thirty students got together as a student advisory. And we, we basically took the fifteen top responses by students, and we created our charter out of it. And then we sent the student advisory-created charter to the full student body again and said, vote yes or no on whether or not you agree with this charter. And we had ninety-six percent of students say, yes, we agree with this charter. The number one way that students said they wanted to feel was safe. Right? Um, this year, we didn't do a, oops, we already have a school charter, we could skip charter. Um, this year, we went back, like, vote on the charter from last year. Do you have feedback on what you want to move forward with? Student advisory came together, there's our student charter, um, came together, and they said, safe is kind of big, like, is that physical safety? Is that emotional safety? What is safe? So they added safe and secure, which was awesome. The most awesome conversation I listened to was sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, they wanted to add something about being included. Like, acceptance is different than included or inclusive. And for thirty minutes, I just sat there and listened to students debating the difference between included and inclusive. And it was a very big reminder of middle schoolers are so cool. Because they are so smart, so capable, so vulnerable, so odd. Um, and then they're having this wonderful, amazing conversation that sounds like you're just listening to well-trained adults from Yale, talking about included versus inclusive. And so that was added to the charter, and all the students agreed, and the percentage went up from what the students revised, which was amazing. Um, each lesson topic, we do a lot of Google Forms, a lot of feedback from the students and the staff to see how it's going. So last year, we had some staff that said, like, I have a really reticent, uh, or taciturn, depends on the student. Um, they're different. Um, advisory. And so for part of the ER days, a PD that we led as a committee was how to effectively communicate, how to get people to open up their shells. Here's some tier-one instructional strategies that you could use, not only in advisory, but also in the classroom in order to promote active listening response without it being forced. Um, so you're also working on those skills. I think so SEL became huge, um, during COVID, and people attributed it incorrectly to, like, your well-being. And it's so much more than that. It's in curriculum, you're educating students on self-efficacy and pushing themselves to the next level. You're educating students on the relationship building, on the portrait of the graduate that you see. Like, that is the learning that's behind the components. Um, last year, you saw a sample when you visited instructional rounds on the blueprint. Um, I love when students are like, I know Mississippi intent versus impact. It's like, I love that you're saying that to me. Like, I know you're saying it sarcastically, and we have work to do. And it's a little reactive instead of proactive, but the fact that you're saying, I know, intent versus impact. Like, that's big, because then you could have that conversation and start unpacking it with them. Um, and then that started our educational component process. So when students do get into something, or they make a poor decision, right? Behaviors of form of communication, and there's no bad kid. Right? I always tell students when I'm having those conversations with you, you're not a bad kid. Like, I don't, there's no bad kid. There's a poor choice that has been made, let's unpack it a little bit. And they're coming with the skills. Dr. Will, that's kind of showing one of them. Um, where what the students do is they say there's two students that get into a verbal back and forth. Um, rather than be punitive, um, they fill out an intent versus impact separately. They review it with their counselor separately, and then you're able to really bring them together for mediation, and they move forward. And what we've seen is repeat offenses have gone way down. Sometimes there's punitive consequences. We live by the handbook. But you always match them with that educational component or restorative piece, so that they're learning as they're growing and moving forward. Um, the successes this year, and this is not me, by the way, I came in, and there was an amazing SEL committee that put in this twelve-minute advisory, and they were ready to go. Um, I was kind of the guide on the side of, I had an advisory community thing, this is what I learned not to do before we even go there. Um, and I was just, it's the internal expertise that shines. Um, when we started, um, it was kind of really hesitant of what to do. Like, is, are all the staff going to wanna do this? I went in October of twenty twenty-four to the ruler training, I chose five staff that I barely knew yet, um, to go with me. And that was, we realized when we went back, the number one thing they said at that training was like, the buy-in's the hardest part, the buy-in's the hardest part, some people aren't gonna wanna do this. They were ready for it. I felt like the luckiest principal in the world, where everyone was just like, no, we're doing it, we're moving forward. It is on some levels what you wanna make of it. So the, um, committee does make the slides. We share it the Thursday before, um, they go out the next week. Or if it's a heavier topic, or if it's an extended advisory, we actually have committee members present at the faculty meeting, get staff feedback. I present it to student advisory, I get their feedback. Um, and then, and then we present it to all students. So it's been seen by different stakeholders. Um, our qualitative and quantitative data last year was superb in terms of shared vision. Students saying that they feel, they feel safe when they're at the school, that they can connect with a trusted adult, that students respect students, students respect each other's differences, all of those went considerably, um, in the positive direction, which is fantastic. Um, we have been in continued conversation with Yale, so they heard about us, which is great. Um, and they asked, can we come see you? So this past October, the five, like, directors of Yale, um, no big deal, um, sent me a very large, like, please fill out all of these. They sent me a lot of questions, and I thought I was supposed to fill them out and take a lot of time. Like, we didn't mean, we didn't think, we didn't mean for you to fill them all out. Um, the SEL, it's pretty crazy. Um, and they're invested and dedicated. So they even saw an extended advisory, different one than what you would have seen last year. And then they gave us some feedback, and then they really, it was a wonderful thing, like impetus in the beginning of the year, for them to say, you are like what we want to see. This is absolutely amazing. Um, they asked us to apply as a spotlight school, um, for the following year, that would be a national recognition. And they have asked us to apply to do a presentation at their national conference in October twenty twenty-five. Um, at the same time, I think, I'm starting to think like I should be getting paper. They're giving to SEL committee, um, at the Connecticut Association of Schools, almost like every single, uh, an administrator from almost every single district was at the CAS, um, learning, like, um, conference that just happens, and Ruler was one of the sponsors. And I got down to my computer, and one of the directors at Ruler said, you just walked by me, come back out here, I wanna talk to you. Gave a huge shout-out, was telling other principals, like, Talon got it right. And this isn't a recognition of me. This is the students and the staff, and it's great for Talon. Um, uh, administrator close to us just asked if they could come in and see us, and then an administrator reached out um, from another district and said, can we come see you? The SEL committee, I said, that's not my choice, that's the SEL committee's choice. Um, I brought it up to them, like, how do you feel welcoming more people in? I know the Board of Ed already did it. Um, people kinda wanna meet with you, see what we're doing, how we're like, kinda gaining this momentum in the buy-in. Um, that principal came with two staff members, um, and left feeling renewed and energized. And like, they can do it, because they're where we were two years ago. Um, and it's hopeful, we're lifelong learners, we're learning. From that, from that experience, we know, oh, we could absolutely tweak that. Like, we're not the epitome at all of Ruler. We have a lot to go and a lot of places to, to grow. Um, but it's, it's testament that we're on the right track and how important it is that other people in districts want in. Um, three teachers just were accepted, they did a proposal to NELMS, um, the New England Middle School, um, and
League of Middle.
League of Middle School. And they were accepted, so three, um, staff that are on the SEL committee went and presented in Springfield, um, as well regarding that program. And if it had outreach throughout, and the teachers aren't looking for recognition. They, in many ways, almost should be. Um, that's, if you talk to one of them, like, this is just making me happy teaching. Like, I love creating these slides, I love the difference that I'm making. Like, I don't want anything from these districts. They've been talking to the, the teachers that visited us, they're still in communication, sharing back and forth materials, which is fantastic. Um, moving forward, the one piece that we're working on is that student agency piece. So it's interesting to hear what's going on in the conversations you have to have with the little ones. And then you're like, that's very different, but not so different from what's going on at the middle school. I think we get a little bit, oh, not so different. A little bit more into the nuances behind how you're feeling. So like, red is good, like, you wanna advocate, you're angry, what could you be doing? Like, a persuasive essay would be fantastic, right? You don't wanna be in the red or in the yellow and seeming all happy if you have good social awareness and you're entering an event where that wouldn't be the right thing to be in that situation, so that, that, that self-awareness and that social awareness is, is huge and pivotal, and just helps them be better. Um, our big tagline this year, really, I think we've gravitated from be curious, not judgmental, to just be your best self. Like, are you being the best self that you could be with the notion that your best self doesn't have to be in the yellow or the green? Um, your best self is where you are at that moment, and what you could do for yourself and other people with where you are in that moment, without offending anyone and moving yourself backwards. Like, fail forward and have that self-efficacy. Um, the portrait of the graduate is through it all, that student agency piece, um, student advisory is now looking at advisory lessons ahead of time. They have asked that the SEL committee meets during the day, so that the student advisory and the SEL committee could combine to do it together. And I think that the middle school students are ready to take on that work and to lead the work, they're the ones living it. So when we're staff and we're doing a Facebook example, and we're like, oh, Facebook, that's so adult. Like, we do, we do need to know what they're living, because we didn't have cell phones when we were their age. We didn't need the meta moment, the, right? When I picked up the phone, that gave me a meta moment. Um, they have everything at their fingertips to be able to quickly make a mistake without thinking. And that space between event and response is so important, especially at the middle school level and with the teenage brain, where the frontal cortex isn't quite fully developed yet. Um, year three, we're just gonna continue increasing this student agency piece, um, partnering, because I think there's so much wonderful things that come if you have a group of staff and a group of students working together, creating something that all staff and students are getting. Like, that's so powerful, and it makes me have goosebumps, quite frankly. Um, other partnerships, too, um, the PTO, um, is growing, um, they're awesome, thank you for going on it. Um, and they were like, our kids just don't know how to study. Like, they know, they know what to study, just they don't know how to study. Um, so we brought that back to the SEL committee, and we were, and we were like, there are like different types of learning. So we started talking a little bit about Howard Gardner and multiple intelligence theory. And do students even know if they're more of an auditory learner, or a visual learner, or kinesthetic? Um, and we had a two-week advisory on not only what type of learner are you, but if you're a certain type of learner, what are some studying skills that you could use in order that would best help you as a type of learner? Here's how you could study if you're kinesthetic. Here's how you could study if you're auditory or visual. Um, and then shared that with the PTO before it went out, and they were very thankful as well. So I think continuing that stakeholder buy-in, while also making sure it's not just a morning thing. Um, our last event of our pep rally was students had to plot the ruler. Um, they were all dressed in the four colors of the mood meter, those were the four teams for the relay. And their very last task, after they did the toilet paper and everything, this was student advisory helped create this whole pep rally, which was amazing. Um, their last task was to flip over a piece of poster, diagram the four colors and diagram where the two, what words would go in each quadrant, and then high-five the falcon in the middle of the court to end the pep rally, um, and get it into the curriculum more. Um, you could diagram Hamlet's speech by looking at the mood meter and realizing just how complex of a character he is in that moment. Um, and you could talk about chemistry and combustion. There's a lot, um, that can embed into the actual curriculum. And I think that's, teachers are doing it really well. They just started talking about the Civil War. They had some meta moment, like, how can you effectively communicate about this without offending anyone? Um, how can you have these deep, tougher conversations with, while being effective with the person that may disagree? Like, we don't all have to agree, but we have to respect the person next to us, and how can we do that? Um, and it's helping. I don't know. I didn't get, I could talk forever, so.
Good comment, I guess. I, I think one of the first things that you had said to us when we met you last year, I, I believe it, I believe it was you, if it was not, I'm so sorry, but.
I won't remember.
But I remember sitting in that room and, and, and listening you say, I think, that middle school is sort of the forgotten age. Middle school students are the sort of forgotten, you know, it's a forgotten age where, you know, not all the attention, you know, not within that building, but I guess from a general oversight, you know, uh, point of view, um, gets the attention they deserve. And this whole plan, I think, sort of contributes towards getting rid of that stigma of, of, you know, well, the middle school kids, they just gotta get through middle school over the next three years, and then they're at high school, and that's when you really have to worry about, no. You really have to worry about how they feel when they go into sixth grade. You really have to worry about, seventh grade is different than eighth, than sixth grade, and eighth grade is way different from, from sixth grade. So not necessarily a question, but even from a year and a half ago, everything you said there still holds true now, in that everything you're doing with the, with the SCL, um, content. I mean, it, it goes back to everything you told us again a while ago. So, well done. I mean, this is, this is, I'm gonna take, I'm definite, we're doing a, a month-long SCL unit in my program right now. And some of the things that I'm hearing tonight, between, I mean, the mood meter, and all the things at the middle school level, especially, um, because that's where, that's the level I, I work with. Um, I mean, it's tremendous, and I could see, I could see the students. I, I, I can visualize who this would impact in my program. And I'm sure you feel very similar, and, man, this, this, this particular student, you know, he could really do well if we just, if we just maybe dug here for twelve minutes every morning, you know, whatever it is. So, so, bravo. This is, this is, this is exciting. This is great.
I will say, the students in advisory this year, last year, we had to do some PD tier-one strategies, how to open them up, because they were used to it. They came in, and they, we started shifting our strategies. The students now wanna act out scenarios. The students wanna get up and moving, they wanna plot the words and where they're going. So we've become much more hands-on and scenarios-based, because we're going by what the students need at that moment. So it's exciting to move forward to.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't know, it's past my bedtime. Kind of hard to follow this fruit behind us. So I'm slushest of us, I am at the middle school, so I'm in the library, but I'm pretty much everywhere in the building. So honestly, you know, my tagline when y'all came to visit, you know, I've been, this is my thirty-fifth year of teaching. So I've been doing it for a little while. And, you know, like Ms. Reynolds said earlier, you know, we entered, I entered this profession because I did wanna make a difference. And I always said, you know, if, if my kids could leave me just a little bit better, not only did they learn more, but they le- left a little bit better as a person, I would really feel like I made a difference in their lives. And, you know, back then, I, you know, had my little term was building a better human. That was, you know, somebody said, oh, you're a teacher, what do you teach? And I said, well, I build better humans, or what? So I, we, no, I always talked about that. But until we integrated Ruler into Talon Middle School, I never felt like there was a real way to do that, to impact an entire community. there was a real way to do that, to impact an entire community. Because what I was doing impacted my students. And then they would go on to someone else and and maybe, you know, that approach wasn't the same, but what we're doing now in a very uniform way is we are helping an entire community of four hundred and fifty-three students right now that we have at Talon Middle School all to become better humans, right? You heard from your deaf kids tonight. These are kids who have great communication skills, they talked about, you know, their leadership, their connections. Um, you know, some of them talking about community service, being, you know, communicating, listening. They've been through history, like the people that are really successful, right? They have had an innate ability to have a very high degree of social and and emotional intelligence. But some people need that explicit instruction. Honestly, I think I can only imagine where I would be in my life if I had learned about the meta moment. Right? Because, you know, I'm fairly passionate and can be kind of aggressive sometimes, and not physically aggressive, but and I think back, like, sometimes, whoa, if I had just been able to hit the pause button a little bit, right? Recognize where I am on that mood meter, because again, all emotions matter. And be able to, like, think about what I might say or what I might do. And because that is a life skill, and that will help our children, our students, and actually, it's impactful to teachers to truly be better humans, and if we're all better humans, we are going to have an incredible community. So again, as a teacher, what we're doing is for me, it it makes the days better, because again, I see the impact with kids, I see the impact with my colleagues. And just like Ms. Hickey said, that, you know, we have a lesson going on and I can immediately have those conversations with kids. The two girls that came here tonight, we sat down today and we actually went through the mood meter, and I said to them, where, you know, where are you right now? And we are, you know, again, using more vocabulary and being very precise in those feelings. Because it's not right for me to say, you might be worried, or I think, are you anxious tonight? I don't want to say that. Or, you know, when somebody says, you know, I know you're really mad right now, you're like, I'm not mad right now, I'm frustrated, but but sometimes, right, like, we have oftentimes, I know you're frustrated, we don't really know, so this idea now, the communication we have with students is very different. So I said to the girls, I said, well, where are you on the mood meter right now? So that really helped to frame their day. And we actually talked about, like, depending on where they were, what were some strategies before they came here tonight? What were some things that they could do if they were gonna, if they were anxious, if they were worried, if they were nervous? What kinds of activities could they engage in to shift so that they could stand in front of you in this room that was so full of people? So these are very powerful tools that we are um helping kids to develop in these skills that, as I already said, they are going to kick, you know, carry them from now until, you know, they are no longer walking this earth, and I truly believe they're going to have better relationships. Um, interpersonal relationships with, you know, friends, um, you know, loved ones and so forth because of the skills that we are now explicitly offering and building with our students. And in our structure, the fact that we can do it every day when we revised our schedule, and that was all very intentional, you know, Mrs. Hickey was not with us yet. But I stood up in front of a staff, because I was in the rollout group, and I said to people, we were extremely vulnerable. And we said, look, we all want the same thing. But as I mentioned earlier, I was always working with my group of students, so we had this monumental boulder that we were trying to put but we were all trying to push that boulder by ourselves. Now, we are all getting behind that, and we are all pushing it, and we are making that progress. So without this, you know, program, and and that was the conversation we had with teachers, because we knew the buy-in. Right? Because again, middle school teachers are just like middle school kids, high school teachers are like high school kids, we are a reflection of our students. Right? And, you know, you have the people that were really worried, well, I'm not a social worker, I don't know how to deal with feelings. And but we said, look, if you are, if those conversations come up, we are going to, you know, consult with the experts in our building, we're going to talk with school council, we're going to talk to school psychologists. We are not asking you to be an expert in feelings or counseling, so we really had to work people through that. But we said, look, our goal is all the same, we want kids to be able to learn. But we want them to be available for learning, and we believe that this can help that happen. And that if our kids are more emotionally regulated, you heard Mr. Swanson talk earlier, that you frequently hear the term dysregulated, emotionally dysregulated, that is becoming more and more common. So what we're doing is absolutely addressing that, those skills, because we absolutely have to do. Um, so I just leave you today, that thirty-five years, I finally am in a place where I know that as a whole school, we are building better humans. So thanks, Dr. Will, and I see you because you've been supporting, thank you.
So when you get cut off in the highway, you can be like, you're emotionally dysregulated. So this, uh, you know, to, again, they've they've done amazing things in the schools, the the staff, the admin. So so thankful to have them doing this hard work, um. So we've come a long way, just just to wrap it up for you, I just want to point out, Talon's an exemplar. You know, Talon's in the top five for our scores and, you know, accountability and top scores for SATs, and we're also exemplars in areas of social, emotional learning, these guys have taken a long way, NELMS wants to have us there for presentations, Yale is coming to use this as an example. Got a great school system here and it's built on the work of the staff, the things they're doing in the kids' behalf of the parents, so. Uh, just, you know, keep that in mind as we're going forward, you saw some great things tonight, it's a good way to kind of wrap that. Um, all these great things work together, so. Do you have any questions for our great team?
Um, uh, Mr. Gay, heard you say, um, that the plans with the SCL group and the SCL advisory board, um, that there's a lot of professional development and a lot of time put into that. Can you, can you advise as to when they're creating these curriculums? Or is, are we doing the continued learning during PD days, early release days, that and and how much time that really you're putting a lot of work into this program, right? It's the entire school and it's starting, actually, it's starting at Birch Grove and building it, so what does that in in a nutshell look like when you guys are continuing to, because like Jaden said, very similar to what you said two years ago, such, but it's still constantly evolving, you said you know, you're still learning, right? The team is still learning, so what does that look like?
So last year, we were kind of flying the plane as we were building the plane. We we walked in and it was like, oh, God, okay, what are we doing two weeks from now? And what are we doing? So this year, what we did strategically over the summer was when we looked at like the the, and this is just for the advisory lessons. Um, we took the ruler pillars and we did just four quarters. So quarter one was going to be like the charter, we wanted to revisit, revisit it, we wanted to do it right, if you're gonna do it, do it right the first time. Others were, um, and then the second quarter was all about the idea of emotions matter. And then quarters, you keep building meta moment and then emotions matter, and then the blueprint, so it does, the the pillars work well together because the language builds, like, you can't talk about intent versus impact if you can't pinpoint how you're feeling in the first place, right? Or why didn't you take a meta moment? Well, what does that mean? So it does a logical order. And then we also filled in what are some proactive topics that we know we want to do, so Veterans Day gratitude, we knew we were going to want to do gratitude. Interestingly, the students' feedback was, what about gratitude for your, like, gratitude for yourself would be good? We actually talked about how to receive gratitude, when someone compliments you, it's very awkward. The students actually polled and said, we love giving more than receiving something because it's awkward to receive, so we gave them strategies on how to, so we're building them, um, we're discussing the lessons in committee work. And then there's, really, this is a team of seven right now, it's seven staff members. We're dividing who's creating the lessons, and then they're creating it on their own time outside of the committee. And then they're sharing it electronically with certain people to get a view of it. And you're trying to reach out to other staff members, share it with student advisory, advisory meets once a month. So they know what's upcoming, I get ideas from them. Um, they wanted to do reporting versus snitching, so that is what we did, was reporting versus snitching, because that was very important to them. So then the SCL committee brought their ideas back, met as a committee, saw what volunteers on the staff wanted to create it, and then those volunteers went out, created it, shared it with the SCL committee, shared it with the students, and then implemented it. Um, and there's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Um, but it's worth it, our hope is now we have have two years, right? So, but us two years ago is not the same as it will be two years from now. Um, so you do have a plan, we won't be building the plan as we're flying it, we are planned out until June right now with the lessons. Um, but that will provide us to that student agency piece, like, help make this better. Do we still need this lesson so that the students don't have to build it and fly it at the same time? Um, so that we could increase that component. Last year, there was more PD because it was new for staff as we were also giving it to students, they had professional development prior to it, they knew the components of ruler, some of them had been trained really well. Um, but there was a how to implement it is different than what it is. Um, so when we talk like on the ER day, we had, how do what's the difference between like too much respect, that it's almost a facade? And not enough respect in the beauty of the middle and the uncomfortable ability of the middle? And how to have courageous conversations if something comes up, don't freeze, don't fight, don't flight, how to respond to that. And now that's actually what we're also trying to teach the students, because we're more well-versed on it. Um, so I think as we grow and that that type of professional development, that's teacher-run. Um, this year, the teachers got together right before school and we did our first, well, our second, um, staff charter. We revisited the one that was there when I got there, which was a beautiful cheat sheet for a principal. Um, and we redid it and we voted on it, and we have our own staff order that is part of the staff bulletin every single week, the student charter is part of the digital backpack every single week. Um, and starting to implement it in different ways.
The Birch Grove Committee meets once a month after school and we make those like the lessons that I ran through tonight, we make as a committee. And we work on it, and then we talk about feedback we received from the teachers, how it can go better, a lot of those slides have speaker notes at the bottom, so that if a teacher isn't up on the meta moment or another aspect of ruler, they have the speaker notes at the bottom. So they can just, we wanted to make it as user-friendly as possible to for all the teachers in the building to implement this in their classrooms, and so we meet once a month to create these things.
There's just so much work that you're, I mean, it's phenomenal, I mean, I appreciated it in the started, I appreciate it in the rounds and seeing it and seeing it live in the classrooms. And then hearing you talk about it again tonight and how it's progressed, it kind of brings it full circle, but there's so much time and effort put into it, but you all kind of connected the dots about how this chart, I just read it, you know, I was mad, whatever, happy, you know, before I started to know about it. But then you're talking about how encompasses in the educational aspect, it's not just oh, you're sad, let's put her in a bubble, and that's not, that's not her feelings today. You know what I mean? I mean, that's how it all started in the beginning, right? That's not her, her, her feelings today, but it's really, that's not what it's about. It's not what it's about at all, and it starts with that three-year-old who doesn't know how to use their emotions, and I just think it's phenomenal how it's you kind of married it with the education so that every single learner can kind of open up and really receive that education.
Extends that into the world, but what I'd like to do is, you know,
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
We are getting kind of close to ten, we do have Adam Tef also waving and Pete Staba, so if you have any other questions to have the time, but uh, these guys have been here all night, I want to give them a chance.
Absolutely, let you go.
And they made their own piñatas and tomorrow, so they don't know what's going to be inside them.
You have leftovers.
Uh, I believe the invitation said four fifteen. That was a good dry run.
They they did phenomenally.
When when are they in action?
So they traveled to Dearborn, um, the beginning of June, so they'll be gone for two days, three days.
That's the luck, that's the luck.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Right, you have, um, we're gonna slide all the way down to N one. All right, so N one, um, just wanted to bring it back to the board's attention. This was something that the board had talked about before, we had Adam Tef, Adam Tef is back, um, can you hear us?
I can.
And so we've, I put this slide decked up from the previous presentation. Adam has worked with us, as you know, in the past as well, with the FFC committee and the board. Um, and so you did get a presentation, that's a one on it, and tonight bringing it back to you as the board had requested to have us come back. Uh, this would be a second review of the situation, personally, I think that the Birch Grove and THS options do have absolute benefits for the district and then, you know, the, you know, there's a you know, they they have a benefit and the risk is not not very high. Also, Pete Staba, he's been kind enough to hang in there, you know, all these hours too. And so Pete may or may not be available at the moment, but um, but Pete, if you're there to just just, you know, let us know. Um, so does anybody have any further questions for for Adam? We were kind of looking to drill down to getting to a point where tonight, if it's possible, um, there is a motion that is in the, um, that's in the folder, this motion would be to allow us to proceed, a motion to authorize the superintendent schools to negotiate um, an agreement with Green Skies and to include any other necessary parties. Um, and that would be something that would come to you anyway, whatever agreement uh, would be negotiated would be brought to you. So what we're looking to do tonight is see if we can move this forward so that we can, um, you know, start to to benefit or get some of the benefit of of this in the long term.
Right.
Yeah, so I just want to revisit what we were hoping to revisit after the first conversation in regards to the concern of the uh payment. I guess from the, to see if it could be applied to our electrical bill, whatever, if there was any I don't know, um, conversation about that with ever source or whomever it was.
Yeah. Yeah, so we could, we could very easily convert this into something that looks you know, basically more like a PPA, more like, um, something that'll directly uh positively benefit your electric bill as opposed to a lease payment coming in, like, in the in the form of like a a check, so that's very doable.
Yeah, because that was one of my main concerns, I just didn't want the town seeing us get revenue and potentially try to offset our budget or whatever the case may be, but if it directly applied to our energy bill, then well, I think that would benefit the 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 board a lot better in having that kind of conversation.
And everyone does benefit, I know, uh, Pete Staba, uh, did you have anything you wanted to throw out there too? I want to make sure, you waited for so long, did you have anything you want to add? Just to what I had said, or?
Sorry, guys, my uh ruler level says I'm very tired at this point of the night here, so, um. But, um, I have to piggyback on Adam's thoughts there, it's, uh, it's gonna be more transparent to have it show up as a credit uh towards a power bill. Uh, very similar to what we see with the virtual net metering credits now that come from the town that they apply to two separate meters, one being the high school meter and one being one of the two meters at Talon Middle School. Um, I I think it just makes it much cleaner, uh, and I think it makes it easier for us to attract. And it's gonna make it, uh, quite honestly, a little more easy to budget too, because uh, we keep that, you know, we keep track of all of our expenses on an energy manager software platform. So I I think it's the better way to go.
Dan, for FFC, do you have any comments?
Nothing directly from FFC.
Then take, why don't we check the temperature, um, entertain the motion?
Could we get it back up there? Make a motion to authorize the superintendent of schools to negotiate an agreement with Green Skies and include any other necessary parties, should I add for the plan for the high school and Birch Grove?
Could, you don't, you don't have to do that, because it'll, it's coming back to you guys anyway.
Okay.
What was that, Dan?
I would second.
Discussion question, wait on, did he, did Dan second the addition to his motion?
Yeah, it's complete motion.
It's the complete, okay, I got you, just for clarification.
Any other discussion? Participants on second seat. All right. Just hedging my bets. All right, Jayden. Reenie. Brian. Phil.
Hi.
All right, Dana. All right, Dana.
Hi.
Katie.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Motion passes. Adam, thank you, uh, for, for participating on the call. We appreciate you staying up. Pete as well, stay up ladies. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, everybody.
All right. Moving on, public participation comments, there's to be linked items on the agenda. Anybody in the room, please raise your hand. Come on, raise your zoom hand and be recognized. All of those people are here. All right. Public participation closed. As discussed, there is no executive session. Points for information, then invite from the board, like speak real quick. I should have acknowledged you with the rest of the educators in this room earlier, Dr. Willitt. I appreciate you. Your acknowledgement is coming. I promise.
Last month was board appreciation month.
Oh goodness.
Continue, but I'm going to give you each.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? All right. Dr. Willitt, you want to talk about the instructional round on May the first?
Uh, yeah. It's, um, you'll notice that the time has been shortened because it was, oh, well, on the, on the board agenda, um, maybe not because it was a copy piece. But if you look at what I sent out to the board on a dashboard, it's been narrowed in time. So it's, oh, it's two or three hour blocks. It'd be easier to, to hit. It'd take maybe the afternoon.
Where is it?
Um, and then it's going to start probably at the high school. Um, but I'll make sure that you know that. And it won't be going between schools. It'll just be one place and it'll likely be the high school.
Give it to Bill. All right. Katie.
Hi.
Reedy.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Phil.
Hi.
And Dana.
Hi.
Katie.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.